Okay, it is 7:30, so we have called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 16, 2019. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we are beginning our recognition of the Christmas season, we are thankful for the many blessings and gifts that have been bestowed upon the community of Batavia. And we just ask that the blessings that we've enjoyed this year will continue forth and that as a community, we remind ourselves of our need to aid our fellow man and all the good causes are out there. It was vividly illustrated yesterday with Batavia coming to the support of our access toy drive where we served well over 587 children with toys at the Christmas distribution. And so I think that is a living reminder to the heart and gentleness and the support that is found within the Batavia community. As also tonight, we want to ask for guidance and understanding as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing that each member of the council is here to vote on their best, what they feel is the best interest of the community as a whole. Tonight, we also want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered and shown upon each one of them along with all those others from our country who are serving so ably. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Salvati, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's over there now. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's running on the street?
Bookends, bookends.
Uh-oh.
So I'd ask that the, uh... Oh, there goes that one. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rosato.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Knopf.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that 13 of the 14 elected members of the city council are present and accounted for so we have the necessary court to conduct business. Alderman O'Brien notified us late this afternoon that he's ill and would not be in attendance tonight. Okay, moving then to the next item, which is forward, a reminder to everyone, if you're going to speak to us tonight, to please use the mic both in the council and in the audience. And then we'll move to item five, or to be, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman?
Not aware of any.
Nothing? Okay. A kind of alone moment here on item number six, which is the resignation of First Ward Alderman Scott Salvati. Alderman Salvati notified me several weeks ago via an email that tonight would be his final night as a member of the city council and would be tendering his resignation. As you know, we went through an exercise at last week's committee meeting in which we interviewed three very highly qualified candidates, and the council made a decision of which one of those three would be appointed. And I'm proud to report she's sitting in the front row of the audience, waiting for her turn at the table here. So if no other business, I would ask that the council accept Alderman Salvati's resignation effective today.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf. Clerk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Salvati.
Abstain.
Callahan.
Absolutely.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Oh, no.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
No.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
No.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
No.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
No.
What was that vote?
Okay, it's six to six.
You guys did it good. Well, with the utmost of regret, I have to vote aye.
So you fired me.
At the same time that I did that, I have the following proclamation, which I'd like to read, and I'm going to ask the council to act on. It says, "Whereas Alderman Scott Salvati has served with dedication and honor and a strong sense of community goodwill during his tenure as a member of the Batavia City Council, representing the citizens of the First Ward in the southeast portion of the city. And whereas Alderman Salvati has given of his time and talents far beyond the required attendance at the two legally scheduled meetings of the city council on the first and third Mondays of each month. Alderman Salvati has been a commendable advocate for ensuring that our city has a positive and productive image within all the other 284 cities and villages which comprise the metropolitan Chicago area. And whereas Alderman Salvati has assumed a very active role in promoting the ideas of a city-based framework for a strong strategic plan for issues and projects, for the ongoing review of the city's master land plan, and other public relations efforts to impact our community's future life, as has, he has utilized his talents to examine and enhance the city's image in logos and other written public communications in efforts to keep citizens informed about the latest developments that affect our city government. And whereas Alderman Salvati has earned the admiration and the respect of our community at large for his visionary leadership and his commitment towards always attempting to treat each issue and decision with a sense of careful review and reflection. Now therefore, given the news that Alderman Salvati has tended his resignation as an elected official effective December 16, 2019, due to his relocation to a new residence within the village of Elburn, Illinois, the members of the Batavia City Council along with the mayor and city staff do hereby extend our thanks and appreciation to Scott Salvati for his legacy of good service to the citizens of Batavia, Illinois." And this is approved by a vote of the members of the city council on Monday, December 16, 2019, and signed by myself as mayor. Would somebody be so kind as to...
Your Honor, I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the proclamation. Anybody want to make any comments prior to it being read?
There's so many. Come on.
Appropriate ones?
Yeah.
All right, Clerk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Well, I think that vote is 12 yes, two absent because Alderman Salvati had already been taken out of the city council.
Yes, you're right.
On behalf of the people of Batavia and the city council, it's my honor to present you this proclamation. And thank you for your good service.
Thank you very much. I know I said this the other night, when I officially resigned, but I couldn't be more humble to be in this group, I'll sit down, in this group of people sitting here at this table. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, in your invocation, every Monday, you mention the fact that we make decisions based on the good of the people of the community, and that is absolutely true. There is not one person that I have served with that hasn't ever made a decision that in their heart they thought was for the betterment of our city.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And it's been a privilege and an honor to be with all of you, at least most of you.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Duesalumely swear.
Duesalumely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
But thank you for the opportunity to serve and just to have hopefully somewhat of an
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
impact here. So, thank you, everybody.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties. I'd ask Jennifer Behrens, if you'd meet me up here in the center of the table for Faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of First Ward Alderman.
Of the First Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
a second. Congratulations. All right, the city attorney advises me, as long as I'm standing up here now, we need Welcome aboard. All right, moving right along to item number eight on the agenda, which is the consent another motion to appoint Jennifer to be, I thought we'd done that at the...
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Chantet, to approve the confirmation of Jennifer Behrens as a member of the city council representing the First Ward. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll. agenda.
Wolf.
Do we take a roll call?
Aye.
Oh, another roll call?
Callahan.
Do you take a roll call?
Aye.
We don't need to take a new one after we see her.
Meitzler.
Aye.
I wasn't sure.
Malley.
Aye.
We've roll called ourselves to death here, honestly.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Let's move into item eight, Consent Agenda. Alderman Chantet.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file, the committee of the whole minutes for November 5th, November 12th, and November 19th, 2019. Approvals, the December 13th, 2019 payroll in the amount of $914,559.27. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,493,262.98. City council minutes for December 2nd, 2019. Resolution 19-122-R, authorizing the execution of an MSA with HLR. Resolution 19-123-R, authorizing the execution of Task Order Number One for construction engineering of Area Three with HLR in an amount not to exceed $152,630.20. Ordinance 19-83, annexing 1109 North Washington Avenue. Ordinance 19-86, amending the text of the zoning code, City of Batavia. Ordinance 19-87, amending the text of the city code Title V. Ordinance 19-85, annexing zoning and amending the zoning map for 1119 North Washington Avenue. Resolution 19-124-R, authorizing execution of a construction engineering services agreement for federal participation of Prairie Street reconstruction, Phase III engineering in an amount not to, in an amount of $313,872.79 with V3. Resolution 19-125-R, authorizing execution of a local agency agreement with IDOT for federal participation for Prairie Street reconstruction project. Resolution 19-126-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number Four for construction engineering of the 2020 Ward One, Phase III stormwater improvement project with Maxon Woodman in an amount not to exceed $94,250. Resolution 19-128-R, authorizing acceptance of a Platte Eastman grant for 1850 East Fabian Parkway. Resolution 19-121-R, authorizing execution of a partnership agreement with the Batavia Public School District and Main Street for the Boardwalk Shop Project. Ordinance 19-61, revising Title IV, Chapter II regarding tobacco regulations. Resolution 19-130-R, authorizing Utility Dynamics Corporation to install underground cables for a feeder from the new northeast distribution substation to existing electric infrastructures on Hubbard Avenue for an amount not to exceed $85,800, which includes a 10% contingency amount. With that, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Knopf, for the approval of the consent agenda presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Behrens.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no-no's, one absent. All right. Going then to item number nine, which is a public hearing, scheduled for 7:35, and as long as we're past that time, we're still legal, because we haven't started ahead of time. It's amending and restating the annexation agreement for property located at 2500 and 37W 330 McKee Street, the Winding Creek subdivision. And this was continued from the October 7th meeting. And Scott is here to handle this.
Yes, the applicant in this case has continued this, and they are still working on contract negotiations with the property ownership. They believe this will be able to be resolved in March or so. So in the meantime, because the existing annexation agreement had the 270-day period to it, it will have expired. So what we're suggesting that we do at this point is close the public hearing, and then we'll republish for the amended annexation agreement, which will include the new language for the new timeframe, once they've finished up with their contract negotiations. So we don't anticipate there's going to be any changes to the development, but it's just a matter of trying to work out the last contract issues with some of the property ownership there.
Any questions on that? Entertainer motion then?
So I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf, to open the, reopen the public hearing, I guess would be the proper term, on the property at 2500 and 37W...
330.
330 McKee Street. Any discussion on that? Clerk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Behrens.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no-no's, one absent. All right. Going then to item number nine, which is a public hearing, scheduled for 7:35, and as long as we're past that time, we're still legal, because we haven't started ahead of time. It's amending and restating the annexation agreement for property located at 2500 and 37W 330 McKee Street, the Winding Creek subdivision. And this was continued from the October 7th meeting. And Scott is here to handle this.
Yes, the applicant in this case has continued this, and they are still working on contract negotiations with the property ownership. They believe this will be able to be resolved in March or so. So in the meantime, because the existing annexation agreement had the 270-day period to it, it will have expired. So what we're suggesting that we do at this point is close the public hearing, and then we'll republish for the amended annexation agreement, which will include the new language for the new timeframe, once they've finished up with their contract negotiations. So we don't anticipate there's going to be any changes to the development, but it's just a matter of trying to work out the last contract issues with some of the property ownership there.
Any questions on that? Entertainer motion then?
So I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf, to open the, reopen the public hearing, I guess would be the proper term, on the property at 2500 and 37W...
330.
330 McKee Street. Any discussion on that? Clerk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Behrens.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf, that we close the public hearing on this stated property. Any discussion? I might add, we didn't have anybody in the audience that wished to address us on this, did we? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion and second then to close the public hearing? Clerk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Behrens.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing is approved. 13 yes, no-no's, one absent. Anything else on that one, Scott? Okay. All right. Moving then to item number 10, which is approval of opening of bids for sale of Georgetown Pond off of Western Avenue. You have this one, Scott?
I do. We had published, this is a parcel of land that the city owns on the west side of Western Avenue, surrounded by the Georgetown Townhouse complex. We have talked about this, selling this property back to the townhome association. The other associations already own their ponds. This is just kind of an oddity that they don't own the ponds adjacent to all their residences. So we were given authorization to go ahead and advertise that for sale. So we have done that. We advertised in the newspaper three times, which is required, and then December 11th was our bid deadline for submitting a bid. We received one bid, and I am required to open that at the meeting tonight. So I will do that at this moment. And the bid is from the Georgetown Homeowners Association president. They have submitted a bid in the amount of $10 for the property. So our next step would be to schedule this for approval by the city council, and then you would be able to sign a deed to deed the property over to the homeowners association, if that is what you wish to do.
And that would probably be at our next first meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody knows that. All right. Item number 11 then, which is appointment of Mark Erh to be the BATV Board of Directors replacing Alan Wolf. Somebody want to care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf and second by Alderman Chantet. Did somebody over here want to say something? Alderman heard it.
Shouldn't you abstain?
Clerk, call the roll then, for the approval of the appointment.
Wolf.
Aye.
Behrens.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no-no's, one absent. So thank you, Alderman, for willing to step forward. That's a challenging position. And I also want to thank Alderman Wolf. I think you've been there since the very beginning of this.
Well, I've been there since, I think, the year after I got in the city council, so 2004, 2005, be about when I started. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be on the board as an at-large member, and then also, I'm not going anywhere on the broadcasting and volunteer side. So I'll still be there.
You've become a community legend in your own time.
I'm much, I'm much more proud of the cameras that are up in this room and all the committee meetings and all of everything else that we broadcast for the public to see. I think that's really more of the legacy I wanted to create, was that.
Okay, very good. All right. Moving then to item number 12, which are matters from the public. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the city council for something that's not on the agenda? Ms. McKenna.
Good evening. Britta McKenna, 512 North Avenue. I would like to share some reflections on Fermilab from 2019. Fermilab is America's particle physics and accelerator laboratory with a vision to solve the mysteries of matter, energy, space, and time for the benefit of all. For over 50 years, Fermilab has conducted research on a 6,800-acre prairie that has been designated a national environmental research park. To many, Fermilab is a place of mystery, but it is really a place of wonder and a treasure right here in Batavia. It has been my privilege to be a Batavia representative on the Fermilab Citizens Advisory Board for over four years. As an ambassador for the lab, I wanted to take an opportunity to share with all of you, and those of you at home, my top 10 of Fermilab's accomplishments this year. You can get more information about Fermilab at fnal.gov. Number one, the groundbreaking of the LBNF Dune near site, an international flagship neutrino experiment involving over 1,000 scientists and engineers in 30 countries. Number two, the launching of Fermilab Quantum Institute, solving the challenges of quantum science and technology for the benefit of all. Number three, attaining platinum-level accreditation recognition for ecological restoration efforts with Chicago Wilderness by the U.S. Department of Energy. Number four, supporting our veterans through the Vet Tech Program, receiving the 2019 Higher Vets Gold Medallion Award by the U.S. Department of Labor. Number five, innovating through invention. Fermilab oil spill cleanup technology, EMOP, was among finalists for the R&amp;D 100 Award. Number six, educating the next generation of scientists in STEM careers. The Wonderful Women in STEM was held on November 2nd for 40 girls and superheroes in STEM, and on November 16th for 65 students to inspire the next generation of scientists. Number seven, hosting annual events open to the public, like the Annual Open House coming up February 8th next year, and the Wonders of Science, April 19th. Number eight, celebrating the Arts and Lecture Series. Last Saturday was Christmas at the Silent Movies, which was accompanied by live music. And coming up on January 10th is Hunting Dinosaurs in the Sahara with Dr. Paul Soreno. You can call 630-840-ARTS for more information. Number nine, sharing science every day, well, almost every day, at the Letterman Science Center. Bring the family, it's free, and open to the public with dozens of recently renovated science displays and hands-on activities. And number 10, inviting volunteers to participate in prairie restoration volunteer work and nature walks through the Fermilab natural areas. nature walks through the Fermilab natural areas. Nobel laureate and former lab director, Dr. Leon Letterman, my science idol and a former colleague at IMSA, would be so proud of how the lab keeps innovating through research on the frontiers of discovery. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down and doing that. Certainly, Fermilab is a valuable resource in this community, and it's made a world of difference in the life of this town over the last 50 years that it's been part of us and doing its thing and made us all very proud. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have anybody else? I've got a whole bunch of people in the audience, and I just wondered if we're something everybody was fired up about or something. But I hope you're just here then to look at good government in action, but that's what we're here for. We try to keep it to the agenda so that if you don't see something on the agenda that you have something you want to bring up, this is the time to do it. So, just so everybody understands that. All right, thank you. Moving then to 13, the Main Street Report.
All right, so everybody in the audience is here for this, actually. I'm going to present the high school winners of our banner competition for 2020 and 2021. I'm going to keep it brief and just go over the four winners. The voting happened earlier this past year, but we didn't present in front of all of you guys and in front of BATV, so we wanted to do that before the year end. So, I'm going to have Kathleen Tieraton come up. She is very integral in this. We work every two years with BHS Graphics Department to have the students design different banners for all the seasons, and then we do a voting competition throughout the entire community. And then those banners go on display for two years in our downtown, the four-winning designs. The other designs, Kathleen works with the students to come up with different designs that we utilize on postcards that we put at businesses around town. We also work with them to do different shop small bags and other things, so the amazing students at the school get their artwork displayed in many different ways. Kathleen, do you want to say anything? Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to call the students up one at a time. Hey, Beth, would you mind coming up here? All right, so for our spring design, I printed them smaller this year. Sorry that they're not giant like normal, but you will see them in 2020, hanging all over, very large. So, our spring design winner was Daniella Kerr. Daniella, if you want to come up? Um, okay, hold on, sorry, I just got the names. Our summer winner, there's our summer banner, is Morgan Garrison. Morgan, if you'd like to come up? And fall for our bulldogs was Rebecca Marston. Rebecca? So, I just want to thank Kathleen and the Batavia School District for this partnership. Like I said, there's other things that we partner on with them, and it's so amazing to be able to display the students our work because we have such amazing artists at our high school. So, just a really great partnership between Main Street and the high school students. So, thank you guys for letting us do this. Thank you for letting us utilize the polls to make downtown more beautiful. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say on behalf of this community in the city council, I'd like to commend and thank each and every one of you for what you put together and your talents that you showed. I mean, I think you're showing Batavia its great points, and I really appreciate as the mayor that you've taken the efforts to really bring out some of the fine points that this town has. And certainly thank Main Street for their efforts in bringing this whole thing together too, and the Batavia School District. So, there's a lot of good community cooperation and sense of community that's represented here, and I appreciate very much what everybody's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, after you're done with pictures, do you have anything else to tell us today?
I will be introducing someone in the new year. If you didn't read the article, we have given the job for Batavia Main Street Executive Director to Sherri Deskertis. She has been with Shaw Media for the last seven years. I don't have her whole bio with me because we will be introducing her to you at the city council meeting in January, the second city council meeting. But we are very excited. It was a long process to find the right person to be at the helm of Batavia Main Street, and we are all looking forward to her leadership in 2020. Is that enough detail for you for now? Okay. Mark Foster wrote an amazing article. You can get more details at the Kane County Chronicle. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving then to item 14, which is Ordinance 19-84, approving a conditional use permit for a motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based establishment in the General Industrial District at 1183 Pearson Drive in Batavia. Who's got this one? Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I'll title this one "The Christmas Is Coming Ordinance." So, this one is Mr. Barnaba's Porsche dealership that is coming into town. He has a very nice inventory, does all of his sales on the internet as was stated, and this is a good expansion for our community. Would you like to describe your business and where you're located?
Sure. I've been with Porsche for over 50 years, or coming up on 50 years. We moved into the location we are now, into a smaller unit, back in 2015, early 2015. And it was supposed to be a little hobby for me and a little retirement thing for me. And here we are now, we've expanded, we've got several employees, and we're selling a lot more cars and restoring a lot more cars, which is our specialty. And we strictly just do Porsche. And it's worked out very well. We're really happy. We get a lot of folks from all over the world that come and visit us and see what we do. And it's quite an interesting process how we go about it, how we go about it. And it's worked out well, and, you know, we love Geneva. I live in Geneva, and I'm happy that my business is here in Batavia, and it's worked out very well.
Well, we're very happy to have you here and some of the benefits that you bring to the community. So, I appreciate your willingness to set up and be part of our northeast side industrial park.
Yeah, I think all the sales tax revenue we receive goes directly to Batavia as far as the repair work that we do to the cars and restoration. That all goes to Batavia, which I think helps the coffers for the city and helps do really cool things that you guys do.
So, I thank you. Any other questions?
I think there were, a couple of your sales have been to Batavia.
Oh, quite a few, yeah, quite a few. Actually, there'll probably be another one here before the end of the year, so.
Who's kidding me? I'm excited. Well, I better hurry with this one then. I move we approve Ordinance 19-84, approving a conditional use permit for a motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based business, Barnaba Autosport, 1183 Pearson Drive, units 102, 104, and 106.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman, I'm sorry, Callahan and Meitzler for the approval of Ordinance 19-84. Any further discussion?
The car goes to Callahan.
Callahan, right.
543 Peebles Court.
Kirk call the roll?
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Welcome sincerely to Batavia.
Thank you, thank you very much. Merry Christmas to all, and if anyone's in the neighborhood, stop by and take a look at what we do.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to 15, which is Resolution 19-129-R, authorizing execution of a contract with the National Research Center for a community survey for City of Batavia. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, have a.
Alderman Chansett?
So, the city of Batavia has conducted community surveys in the past, last one 2018. Staff is recommending that we go with a new organization. We're able to do a little bit of benchmarking as a result of this. It reduces staff time. There's options to add Spanish language to the mailers, and we're hoping that we can get a great baseline of information to help us with continued strategic planning. So, if there are no questions, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-129-R, authorizing execution of a contract with National Research Center to administer our next survey.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-129-R for the execution of a contract with National Research Center for a community survey. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll?
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-129-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Moving to item number 16, which is Resolution 19-132-R, adopting a City of Batavia logo design.
Your Honor, I'll take these two. We have two together. This would be 19-129, and, I'm sorry, 19-132 and 133, one adopting a new logo, and the second one authorizing a payment for that logo, as we discussed in committee. This is a nice refresh of the logo, and we will be rolling it out on signage in the town. And this is the version that we landed on. Any discussion or any other questions?
Any questions, comments? We got Griffin at the podium, so we can have Adam if we want it.
That's what I'm here for.
And I would say before we change our mind, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-132-R, adopting this beautiful new logo.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-129-R, oh, 132?
I'm sorry, 32, correct.
Adopting for this City of Batavia logo design. Kirk call the roll?
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-132-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. So, congratulations, Griffin.
I remember Alan Wolf said to me, there's no way you'll convince all of us to pass the city logo, and he was absolutely right, and we did it together instead, and I think we have a better product for it. So, I think it's fantastic, and it's going to be a great addition to the city.
Very good.
So, then, Resolution 19-133, we actually need to pay for the thing and license it so it belongs to us. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-133, authorizing the payment for the new logo.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-133-R, authorizing a payment to Christopher Dalen for city logo design and ownership rights. Any discussion? Alderman Callahan?
Just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's a total of $3,500 for this with another, I think it was an original $1,000 on this. It's not millions of dollars that were spent on this, contrary to Facebook.
What? Facebook said you were getting a Porsche.
With the logo.
You should foia the minutes of our super-secret meetings.
Okay, with that discussion out of the way, we will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-132-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. So, congratulations, Griffin.
I remember Alan Wolf said to me, there's no way you'll convince all of us to pass the city logo, and he was absolutely right, and we did it together instead, and I think we have a better product for it. So, I think it's fantastic, and it's going to be a great addition to the city.
Very good.
So, then, Resolution 19-133, we actually need to pay for the thing and license it so it belongs to us. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-133, authorizing the payment for the new logo.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-129-R, oh, 132?
I'm sorry, 32, correct.
Adopting for this City of Batavia logo design. Kirk call the roll?
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-132-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. So, congratulations, Griffin.
I remember Alan Wolf said to me, there's no way you'll convince all of us to pass the city logo, and he was absolutely right, and we did it together instead, and I think we have a better product for it. So, I think it's fantastic, and it's going to be a great addition to the city.
Very good.
So, then, Resolution 19-133, we actually need to pay for the thing and license it so it belongs to us. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-133, authorizing the payment for the new logo.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-133-R, authorizing a payment to Christopher Dalen for city logo design and ownership rights. Any discussion? Alderman Callahan?
Just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's a total of $3,500 for this with another, I think it was an original $1,000 on this. It's not millions of dollars that were spent on this, contrary to Facebook.
What? Facebook said you were getting a Porsche.
With the logo.
You should foia the minutes of our super-secret meetings.
Okay, with that discussion out of the way, we will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-132-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. So, congratulations, Griffin.
I remember Alan Wolf said to me, there's no way you'll convince all of us to pass the city logo, and he was absolutely right, and we did it together instead, and I think we have a better product for it. So, I think it's fantastic, and it's going to be a great addition to the city.
Very good.
So, then, Resolution 19-133, we actually need to pay for the thing and license it so it belongs to us. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-133, authorizing the payment for the new logo.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-129-R, oh, 132?
I'm sorry, 32, correct.
Adopting for this City of Batavia logo design. Kirk call the roll?
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-132-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. So, congratulations, Griffin.
I remember Alan Wolf said to me, there's no way you'll convince all of us to pass the city logo, and he was absolutely right, and we did it together instead, and I think we have a better product for it. So, I think it's fantastic, and it's going to be a great addition to the city.
Very good.
So, then, Resolution 19-133, we actually need to pay for the thing and license it so it belongs to us. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 19-133, authorizing the payment for the new logo.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution 19-129-R, oh, 132?
I'm sorry, 32, correct.
Adopting for this City of Batavia logo design. Kirk call the roll?
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Resolution 19-132-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. So, congratulations, Griffin.
Mine was absolutely the most adorable. And we got to go to Walmart with the children and shop with them. I think probably everybody else here would say what they took away from it, but as far as what he was doing for the community and as a business owner in town, the way he is going out for his employees, it was an amazing operation out there.
Yep. I would add to that. I was thoroughly impressed, you know, the opportunity that he gave to those kids, but the, many of his employees were involved in it too, and it's, he's done, they've done a fantastic job remodeling out there. They've just been here eight months, their business is doing fantastic, and you can see why, you know, they really treat their people well. It was really impressive, and he was, this was the first year, and the plan is to continue annually doing this, and so if, next year, if the opportunity comes, I highly recommend you do it, because it was a well-spent Saturday.
And just to kind of capitalize on that as well, I think one of the biggest, most impressive things I should say of it was too, he himself, when he was a child, was a part of the Shop with Cop program. So, this was his way of paying it forward. That was truly impressive to see him put that on.
Anybody else? Is there other business?
I do have one other I'd just like to bring up. I've heard from several citizens, the decorations downtown look fantastic, and I couldn't agree more. You know, it's investment we make, I think, as well, so I think Batavia looks fantastic downtown, more so than other communities. Just like to share that, that I've heard from several.
Yeah, very good. Anybody else?
Your Honor. Couple of citizens told me today that somebody has a birthday today that we need to send a happy birthday to before. So, who wants to help me? Because you don't want to hear me just thinking by myself.
We don't, we don't need to.
Oh, no, we don't need to.
We don't need to do this.
We're going to do this once, okay? Just one time, maybe again later. You guys ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mary. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. I think this is kind of a new dynamic in my many years of service here. That's never been done before.
There's a lot of things that have changed this year, so they're all for the better, so it's good.
All right, under the mayor's report, I just want to share with you that yesterday was the Christmas Toy Drive at the Newton Center. Batavia Enterprises donated the building for their use, and I believe that at the end of the day, they had provided toys for 589 kids. And they had a steady stream of folks in there for about a four-hour run, and the way they had it all set up and the way they, the Batavia High School football team came in and carried out all the toys to cars, and we had great support from the Batavia Police Department. They were there and kind of made sure everybody came in safely and got out safely, and so it was just a great moment for Batavia to shine, because I think it again spoke, as I said in the invocation, to kind of the great spirit of this community and the willingness to have it serviced. And like you just mentioned, a couple of businesses certainly stepped forward, and the one I want to specifically cite is Aldi grocery stores out on Kirk Road. They donated all the tables that were put down, and they're now owned by Batavia Access, so I guess we can use them every year when we go forward, and they're really nice tables, and they also donated a lot of items that were part of the giveaway. So, just I want to cite them for their tremendous generosity today to our community. So, I just think Alderman Euer came and took a tour. Did any of the rest of you get there that I missed? But it was something to see, and very well done. And to the Baileys and the Dubises, who are the ones that kind of lead this thing, the Bailey's whole family comes, including their son, who's an Oswego police officer, and their daughter, who works at Geneva High School, and so her family, and so it's a family affair, and it's a second generation in therein, because Roy's mother, Mildred, was very, very involved in this for a number of years, and so this was the 71st year that we've done this toy drive in Batavia. So, I think it speaks wonders as to what this community can do when it wants to. So, on that note, I want to end by wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a joyous Happy New Year, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved by Alderman Barron, second by who?
Second.